I call the regular City Commission meeting of January 14th, 2014 to order. May we stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
Hi, Pledge of Allegiance.
It's the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Amy, may we take a roll?
Commissioner Foreman.
Here.
Commissioner Crzyjak.
Here.
Commissioner Perry.
Here.
Commissioner Scott.
Here.
Mayor Metzger.
Here. I just wanted to make a comment. If you've noticed during the Pledge of Allegiance, you may not notice, we have now adjusted the flags. One of my neighbors made a point of US flag protocol, that the American flag stands to the right of the speaker and the other flags stand to the left. We've always had the flags together, so as of tonight, we have followed protocol. And I thank our neighbor and I hope he's watching and will come and thank me for following his advice. Amy, do you want to introduce?
Sure. We recently had a new addition to our City Hall employee family. Her name is Taryn King. She was hired in just before Thanksgiving and she's here this evening. We're going to introduce her. Actually, she just got married, so she's Taryn Hart now. And you'll be seeing her face if you stop into City Hall. So this is Taryn.
Yeah, good Taryn.
Thank you. Residents of Pleasant Ridge, it's been very nice getting to know you. The past couple months, I've been starting to work here. I still have a lot to learn and I hope that all of you can help me in the process because most of you have lived here longer than I've been alive. So I appreciate that. But anyway, I'm sure I'll see all of you around City Hall when you come in to pay your taxes or your water bills. So thanks again and I look forward to seeing all of you when that time comes. So, thank you.
Well, you expect that from your kids. The next item is consideration of the following minutes. Special City Commission meeting held Thursday, December 5th, 2013. The public hearing and regular City Commission meeting held Tuesday, December 10th, 2013. And the special City Commission meeting held Thursday, December 12th, 2013. Is there a motion to approve?
Mayor, I move the minutes from the minutes of the special City Commission meeting held Thursday, December 5th, 2013. The public hearing and the regular City Commission meeting held Tuesday, December 10th, 2013. And the special City Commission meeting held Thursday, December 12th, 2013. Be approved as recommended.
Is there support?
I support.
Can we take a vote?
Commissioner Perry?
Yes.
Commissioner Scott?
Yes.
Commissioner Foreman?
Yes.
Commissioner Crzyjak?
Yes.
Mayor Metzger?
Yes. Motion carries. The next item is consideration of the December 2013 dispersment report. Amy?
Payroll and accounts payable for the month of December was provided to all of you prior to the meeting. Payroll was $52,361.96. Accounts payable was $715,960.80, of which $368,638.43 were in tax li-.
Are there any questions? Okay. Is there a motion to approve?
Your Honor, I move that the December dispersment report be approved as recommended.
A support? A second? Okay, may we take a vote?
Commissioner Foreman?
Yes.
Commissioner Perry?
Yes.
Commissioner Crzyjak?
Yes.
Commissioner Scott?
Yes.
Mayor Metzger?
Yes. Motion carries. Okay, the next item is a consideration of the following consent agenda. Resolution in honor of the birthday of Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. And proclamation recognizing January as volunteer blood donor month.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, there's, like you said, there's two items on the consent. And these are routine items by the City Commission that is typically yearly items, but important especially for Dr. King's birthday. And I approve, I recommend those be approved.
Motion to approve?
Mayor, I move the consent agenda be approved as recommended.
Is there a second?
A second?
Can we take a vote?
A comment?
Sure.
Regarding item 6B, proclamation recognizing January as volunteer blood month. I think the proclamation is great. But a question kept popping into my head, what does this really mean to us as residents of Pleasant Ridge? Is there anything more that we can do, like as the city, the commission, the administration, to help facilitate blood donations this month, for example? So obviously already this month is well underway and we don't have a lot of time left, so we'd have to do anything rather quickly. So I thought I would just start by mentioning the Red Cross website is www.rencross.org. And you can call them at 1-800-REDCROSS. And you can set up a donation and find anywhere locally that you can search for a donation site. And whatever fits with your schedule and your geography is available. There were about 12 pages of sites when I looked today. Just thought I would mention that.
Go ahead. May they be... Okay, can we take a vote?
Commissioner Perry?
Yes.
Commissioner Scott?
Yes.
Commissioner Foreman?
Yes.
Commissioner Crzyjak?
Yes.
Mayor Metzger?
Yes. Motion carries. The next item in our agenda is City Commission liaison reports. And we'll start with Commissioner Foreman.
Well, I have a few updates from our friendly neighborhood Ferndale School District. First is something I'll call Winter Break 2013, the Extended Cut. This last day of school, before winter break, was December 20th. Classes were scheduled to resume on January 2nd, but due, of course, to the extreme amounts of snow, that had to change a little bit. The kids got an extra week out of the deal, which is a pretty nice bonus for the kids. We have upcoming the Extravaganza, which I'm sure we'll hear about a little bit more later on in the meeting. This is Saturday, January 25th, although it looks wrong to me, but I think that's the 25th. And it's from 11:00 AM to 5:00 PM, Ferndale High School, which is 881 Pine Crest. This event basically showcases the many great things accomplished in the Ferndale schools at all grade levels. And there's an all-city concert with bands and choirs from all schools. There's a fair where students will share their work. And education-related nonprofits will share what they've been doing in the community as well. This is a great event for parents to see what the kids are learning and what they're doing. And also good for non-parents to know what our schools are doing in general. Just really quickly about that event. From 11:00 AM to noon, there's a choir concert at the gym. From 1:30 to 2:30, there's a band concert. And 4:00 to 5:00 PM, there's an orchestra concert. So I think this will be a lot of fun for anybody who's got kids in the school or doesn't, who just wants some entertainment, some music, and a good time at the school. Other upcoming events we have tomorrow, the 15th, at 6:30 PM at Jonathan Kennedy Elementary, the K through 3 music concert is taking place. Friday, the 17th, all schools in the Ferndale District celebrate a great day called Records Day, no school. January 20th, it's Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Day. All schools in Ferndale District are closed. The 22nd, at 6:30 PM, there's an ADHD parenting workshop in the Ferndale High School Media Center. The 25th is the Extravaganza I mentioned before. The 27th, at 7:00 PM, school board meeting. Definitely have to be there. That's at Harding Administration Building. The 28th, 6:30 PM, friends and different learners meeting at Harding. Tuesday, February 4th, at 6:30 PM, would be the Jonathan Kennedy PAC and PTA meetings at the JFK Auditorium. Another one, I think, will be a hit, is Wednesday, February 5th, no school. Finally, I have the 6th of February, Roseville Elementary's Tech Crazy Family Night, also 7:00 PM, 8th Grade Parent Information Night at Ferndale High School and the Media Center. That is my report for this month.
Great, thanks. I think I just saw the Ferndale people leaving. No, no. You were just bringing back great fond memories of K to 3 music concerts. Sat through a lot of those, didn't you? The next is the Historical Commission. Commissioner Scott?
Yes. I wasn't able to attend the meeting last week. I'm recovering from a cold that seemed to be sweeping through Michigan right now. But there are two items that came up out of the meeting. The first is they're pursuing the Speaker Series, which are hoping to happen in March. There's a speaker identified for the Speaker Series, so it should be really a cool thing in March. And then secondly, they're actively looking for people to participate in the home tour. So you'll be hearing a little bit more about that over the coming months. That's what I have to do.
Thank you. Planning Commission DDA, should carry.
Well, the Planning Commission and the City Commission are going to have a master plan visioning session on Wednesday, January 22nd, at 7:00 PM at the Community Center. And that is one of those, it's an important step in the city's master plan process where these two commissions get together and they'll be discussing the framework for sort of the core systems that shape Pleasant Ridge's physical, social, and environmental and economic future. So it's one of those great things for the public to come to and give any input that you can. The, you know, it's going to be a lot of a presentation from our city planners, Beckett and Rader. And then, but also, you know, will there be, will they be able to facilitate some community input?
Absolutely. Yeah, that's the main, the main portion of it will be to get some input, yeah.
For community input, great.
And go over the plan.
So please do try and come on Wednesday, January 22nd, and be up at the Community Center at 7:00 PM. And it'll be very interesting. You know, it's always one of those, Beckett and Rader does a good job of helping facilitate of different discussions and conversations and making you really think about what are important goals for the city. And also, the Woodward Transit Alternatives Analysis Committee is going to meet next Tuesday, January 21st. And this is the committee meeting. It'll be in the Berkeley Public Safety Building at 2:00 PM. The project team is going to summarize the public meeting input. You know, we had a Ferndale meeting in December. It was at Coolidge Middle School. And the committee will discuss moving the project to the next phase. And, you know, which, you know, right now Pleasant Ridge is such a complex intersection with 10 Mile and 696 and the ditch underneath and Main Street and all of these different portions that it is still very unknown how this, how the transit is going to affect us. But it is something that we're at the table and really making sure that we are, you know, helping put our perspective in as well as, you know, really working with all the other cities and seeing the benefits that you can get, you know, with all the different options for where the lanes can go, you know, if it's going to be a dedicated transit lane. So it's going to be, it's, these meetings are very, you know, they're very informative. And, you know, and they do really listen to the cities to a degree because they want us all to be able to help, you know, they want us all to be on board and to be behind the system. So, and that's all I have. Thank you.
I think one could say there's a lot of sympathy for Pleasant Ridge.
There is.
That our, that our neighbors really see the difficulties that we have to face with this, you know, whether we've got to go to side, whether we go from median to side or side to side, or how it's going to go and whatever we're going to do at the ditch.
Right.
And if you can have a stop up at the zoo, how do you start to work with that? It's, and they basically have kind of stayed away from it. I mean, the decisions, it's very difficult to get any kind of illustrations.
Right.
Nobody's quite sure how it's going to work, so.
Because they know that we also are very passionate about having a complete streets component to it, too. You know, there are lots of questions about, you know, how could a bike lane work? And that's, that is really hard for all of Woodward. And Woodward is so difficult because it's such a, it's infrastructure that's been in place for so long. And so trying to add a major transportation component to that, and then also, especially when you're talking about, then also we want to make it pedestrian-friendly. And we want to make it, you know, what is it, multimodal friendly?
Yeah.
So that, you know, bikes will really feel safe. So in theory, you know, so you could go out there with your children and feel like you have a protected bike lane and everything. So that's what we're really in there working for. So I'm excited because I think that's what everybody has as a vision for Woodward.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Recreation Commission, Commissioner Crzyjak?
Thank you, Mayor. Our regularly scheduled meeting for December was canceled because of the Christmas holiday. Although this past Thursday, we had a very exciting event at the Community Center. It was the introduction of a plan for Gainsborough Park. And this, this design was worked on over the past year by a group of dedicated residents. And I'd like to thank them for working hard to get the plans off the ground for improvements to Gainsborough Park. Those park plans are really at a stage where we want to move it from where the Gainsborough Park Subcommittee has, has kind of laid the groundwork for some very exciting changes to the park. And now we really want to introduce the, this plan to the broader community and bring all stakeholders into the discussion as far as what we vision that particular portion of our city to look like. I want to thank Scott and Bridget and Amy for a fantastic presentation on Thursday. I thought it went really well. There was a question and answer session. Scott gave a small introductory presentation that went over some of the basics of the plan. Those plans are available online at our website. You can check those out there. And we really want to encourage some input from the residents. So after you view the plans on your, on your own time and check them out, please offer suggestions, offer comments, offer concerns. Those can be directed to Scott at City Hall. And we also invite you to come to our next rec meeting, which will be the 29th of this month. And that will be a topic of discussion, an ongoing topic of discussion as far as how we can garner the input from the residents. Especially, I'm really excited about getting some feedback from children, from, from parents, and really getting the kids to imagine the type of playground that they would like. So I would encourage parents of children of all ages to have those introductory conversations. If you're familiar with the park, ask the kids, hey, what would you like to see here? What needs to be improved? You know, do the slides need to be a little faster? Could they be a little, you know, anything. I think it's really, it's really an exciting component of this project to get the kids to contribute. That, that way, when the time comes down the road where these, this project is, you know, we get shovels in the ground and we can get to that point, the kids will feel as though they've participated in a very meaningful way. And I think that'll create more than just, you know, having a fantastic new addition to our city. It will be an opportunity for our kids and the community in general to really, you know, feel like they've contributed to this project. And that's all I have. Mayor, thank you.
Thank you, Jason. I just wanted to add, you know, we hoped the 6 to 8 meeting would bring some kids out. And it was very illustrative because it was Jason's son, Nick, who made some of the best comments of the whole meeting. Got the most feedback and the most excitement in some of these suggestions on advertising for
Funding.
To bring funding into the community. But it was, you know, kids are going to be using this park. It would be nice to get there. It's amazing how kids can identify what they, they need in a park, much more so than the adults think what's needed in a park. So that was great. And I wanted to also second the comment about thanking Scott. It was a great presentation, as usual. And I thought that the event went really well.
Me, too.
It was a lot of good interaction. And so it was, it was nice to see people out there. And it was really comfortable and certainly well-put-on. So, thanks for the cookies and going out and buying the cookies and all that.
I always love the cookies.
Your baking's getting better all the time. Appreciate that. Okay. Is there any, anything else? Okay, then the next item is the governmental reports. And I think, I know we've got fire and the school board at least. So I think that, fire, oh? Arguing over it.
After you.
Fire lets you go to that, doesn't it?
Well, the school board held two meetings yesterday, back-to-back. A special meeting to fill a board vacancy. And we appointed Jennifer Latash of Ferndale to fill the vacancies created with the retirement of longtime Pleasant Ridge resident Chuck Major. So we're happy to announce that. Ms. Latash is going to serve through the remainder of Mr. Major's term, which ends on December 31st, 2014. And that seat will come up in the November 2014 election. So later this year, Pleasant Ridge residents will be voting on three school board seats that are open. So she has great skills and we're very happy to have her on the board. There's a lot of difficult work to be done. We also had our organization meeting where we elected officers and did some other business, including set the meeting schedule, which Commissioner Jay Foreman noted our next meeting is on the 27th. The fourth Monday, which is, the first two months are a little different than the rest of the schedule. Typically, we meet on the third Monday. But in January, because of the organization meeting, and then in February, because of mid-winter break and Washington's birthday, both of those, we meet on the fourth Monday. So the officers this year are, I'm continuing on my second one-year term as president. Nancy Kerr Mueller is our vice president. And Pleasant Ridge resident Amy Butters and Karen Toomey, our treasurer and secretary, respectively.
And Jim, you didn't even tell us who you are.
Oh, sorry. I'm Jim O'Donnell. A Ferndale resident and president of the school board. So I also wanted to come before you today to talk about some more difficult news, which is the financial condition of the school district. This year, for the second year in a row, we have a significant financial shortfall. Our district last year had an enrollment shortfall principally at the Digital Learning Center, which is a blended online and in-person alternative high school of about 360 students, which caused about a $3.2 million hole in the budget. So that's what we faced even before we took office last year. We had to figure out how to resolve that. We used about a million and a half dollars of our fund balance and we made deep staff and administrative and goods and services cuts to take care of that. So that left us with about $3.1 million of fund balance. This year, we had another enrollment shortfall, which was a little different. We had lower enrollment at the Digital Learning Center again. We had lower enrollment at University High School and then in some of our early elementary grades. So we are looking at this year about a $2.5 million cut. And over the past several years, we've made significant administrative cuts. There are less executive positions in the central administration office, as well as mid-level managers and clerical people. So they're doing more with fewer resources there. We've cut goods and services quite deeply. We've taken advantage of a number of retirements and left positions unfilled. And we looked at several options for trying to resolve these cuts before we went to employees. And we are going to take about a third of that deficit and try to make cuts elsewhere. But one of the things we had to do, that the board decided to do, is ask the district employees to help share in the sacrifice now, while also offering them a commitment that any wage and benefit concessions that they made will be restored as quickly as we can. And I'll talk about a contract that we approved last night that goes along with that. We believe in the collective bargaining process, so these are not cuts that we're imposing. They're cuts that are going to be resolved at the bargaining table. We are not permitted, nor do we want to bargain in public. So I'm not going to talk about the specifics of any proposals with our other four unions, but I just wanted you to know that those negotiations are going on. They're going on in good faith with our unions. And we are represented by the superintendent and the interim director of human resources there. We, you know, we're very disturbed and sensitive to having to ask employees to make these cuts. Certainly, we don't want to make them. We also want to avoid layoffs and we want to avoid cuts in programs that are going to drive people potentially away from the district. So that's where we are right now. The other main cause of these cuts are concerted, years of concerted state defunding of public education and a systematic policy of encouraging charter schools, including for-profit, unaccountable, online education. One of the reasons we're seeing shortfalls in our high schools is because of that. So our vice president, Nancy Kerr Mueller, is going to talk a little bit about what we are going to do about that in a moment. I just wanted to highlight, though, last night we approved a contract with our UAW Local, which is a, which represents our paraprofessionals who help with special education, children, media aides, bus aides, our preschool aides. So these are relatively, you know, lower paid compared to teachers or administrators and employees. We reached an agreement. The UAW Local ratified it with a 71% yes vote. And the agreement does call for a 7.38% wage cut in the current year, from January 1st through June 30th. And on June, on July 4th, on July 1st, rather, there's a 4% wage reduction, which will be offset with what's in labor terms called a step increase. That step increase basically will bring them back to where they were at the beginning of this year. And then we'll have annual increases thereafter. We also are going to have language, or we have language in the contract, that triggers employee wage increases if enrollment goes up, if our state foundation allowance goes up, and if we win an appeal that we have pending with the State Department of Education on how to count certain pupils in our blended learning program. So we think that the agreement, well, we committed in writing to bringing employees back up quickly once we recover from this crisis. And we've had very positive remarks from the UAW president, who, one of the things he, he said to us is that he has a great working relationship with everyone in Ferndale, including our administration. He understands that the sacrifice for his members for the remainder of this year is going to help the district deal with this, with our crisis and move forward to create a better district. So we view it as a difficult decision, but one that we hope is going to pay off for the employees and the residents of the district in the long run. So I wanted to share that with you because I know there are a number of rumors that are circulating in the community. And it's important now that we are beginning to reach agreements with our unions to put the facts on the table where we can. And since this is an approved agreement, that, that the superintendent represented us well in executing it, I wanted to make sure that we came and announced it and told you what else we're trying to do to deal with the situation. So, thank you. And now I'll turn it over to Nan, who'll talk a little bit about our lobbying.
Yes. Well, as Jim said, asking any of our staff to share in the sacrifice is awful and none of us want to do it. So with trigger language, if we can get money returned to us from the state or up our enrollment, we can make sure that everybody's income is restored as fast as we possibly can. So with that in mind, the first thing that we're doing is on February 22nd, which is during our winter break, the entire board, as well as administrators, union leaders, I believe, some of our municipal leaders, I'm not sure which ones have agreed to go, but some of them have. Teachers, parents, we're all heading up to Lansing. And right now, we're trying to work out something where the school board can talk to our legislature and please, and ask them. Because right now, they do have a surplus. And they could choose, we, they cut about $3 million from us this year. So that could be returned to us. If that was returned to us, all of these things that we're dealing with wouldn't, we would be in a surplus right now. We wouldn't be in this situation that we are. So with that in mind, and back to the Extravaganza. And Jay, thank you. You did a lovely job. You're going to do my job so easy.
I got the right day, didn't I?
What?
I got the right day.
You totally have the right day. It's January 25th at the High School Commons. But also, along with the band and all the fabulous showcasing of the kids, the school board is going to have a table there. We're all going to take shifts. And we're going to be there at a table. So that way, anybody who wants to come and find out about going on this advocacy trip can. A lot of people are not going to be able to go there. So please contact one of us. Specifically, we created a new committee last night, and it's called the External Relations Committee. And it's going to be dealing largely with legislation and outreach to our four different municipalities that we have and kind of trying to bring our whole entire district a little bit closer, which is something we've been struggling to figure out how to do. So Karen Toomey is the chair of that. And so she said that she would welcome anybody sending any emails to her, that she would love to fill them. sending any emails to her, and that she would love to fill them in, if anybody has any questions of what else they can do. There's the TriCountyAlliance.org, which is Macomb, Wayne, and Oakland combined and created this alliance. And I've talked to you guys, but you guys were all a whole different bunch of people. It's through Oakland. So if you go through Oakland Schools, and you put in like Oakland Schools Legislative, it'll pop right up. And if you click on that, it's got like the different clicks where you can go, and you can write to all your legislators, you can find out all the legislation that's being pushed through right now to enforce cuts, to try to weaken our public school system as I see it on a whole. So I would really, really, really like it if you guys would write letters, and if as many as possible of you could come with us up to Lansing, or write letters for us to take to Lansing. We'd love that, too. My hope is that we can get that money back, and we can restore our entire staff, and we don't have to ask for any of this. So, thank you. Does anybody have any questions?
When you're saying $3 million, how, $3 million plus dollars, how does, where do those come from? I mean, obviously, there's a per pupil amount and things like that, but how much?
So last year, this, and I'm not on the Finance Committee, so I'm doing a lot of summarizing here, so if anybody knows like the real names of stuff, you're more than welcome to step in. But they diverted K-12 money from K-12 to community college, was it community and public colleges?
And public universities, yeah.
Which, in my opinion, was the wrong thing to do, because those institutions have the ability to fundraise in a whole lot of ways that public K-12 institutions do not have the ability to fundraise. We can't just charge people more for our classes or anything like that to cover shortfalls. So that money got diverted, and so it was 2.5 last year million that diverted from us?
I think so, yeah. Formerly, they, the General Fund contributed to the School Aid Fund, and it was just K through 12. But now, there's no contribution from the General Fund, and what, and what the General Fund used to provide for public universities now comes out of the School Aid Fund. So, it's sort of a double rate.
And then this year, it's closer to $3 million that will be taken, and diverting from K-12.
I mean, the sad thing is that we're now, I think, 50th ranked in terms of public funding to universities as well. Our public universities have just been devastated. So even though they're taking more money, we're still so far behind the rest of the country over the last 10 to 15 years.
I think we're getting close to that in public education, too, which is...
We talk about the importance of education, we don't fund it.
I know. So it's very upsetting. Got a question, too, Jason?
I have a question, just a comment, that I think the advocacy committee, the External Relations Committee, is a great idea, and I want to hear more about the advocacy trip, but I just wanted to lend my full support and say that if anybody wants to ride along on February 22nd, that I'll drive.
Yay! Thank you very much. I'm very excited about that.
Davis, but wearing 19th. Don't drive on the 22nd.
No more rides.
Is it the 19th? Does somebody have a calendar up right now?
You said the 22nd.
I don't know.
I did say the 22nd, which is what I wrote down, but I might have been looking at the wrong month.
I think that...
That's a Saturday, 19th is a Wednesday.
Let's go with the 19th. It is on February 19th, because it's in the middle of the week. So, sorry.
No, it sounds good. 19th is good, so whoever wants to go home.
All right. Okay, thank you. I'm so glad that we caught that.
Because they're in session on, it's in the middle of the week.
Thank you.
They only run three days a week.
Oh, I did have one further thing. I know we discussed this at one of the workshops.
Okay.
When we were generating ideas for the ridger, and what kind of content that we wanted to add and make the ridger a little bit more robust. And one thing we talked about was maybe having a page or two pages dedicated to Ferndale Public Schools.
Oh.
So if we could have maybe one of your representatives...
Develop the content.
Develop the content, and then get that to Scott. That's something I think that we should include in the ridger.
Okay, that would be lovely. I would be thrilled to figure that out for you, and get back in touch with both you and Scott, okay?
I think Jay had talked to Karen, and she was...
Oh, that's right, you're the education. Okay, yes. All right, yeah, perfect. Okay, you're already on it?
Yeah.
All right, cool.
We'll work out for next time. We're a little late for this current edition.
Okay.
The next one will happen.
All right, that sounds fabulous. Okay, without any other stuff, I really appreciate you guys.
Thanks very much.
Thank you. Good luck.
Mr. Mayor and Commission? Happy New Year to you all. We just had a recent house fire this last weekend, and that brings up some fire safety things for people in their homes. Extinguishers are really in your home to help you get out okay, but if you are going to fight the fire, remember to call us first, and then engage the fire second. A stove fire ended up destroying most of her home. Complete, two-story, where the fire didn't go, the smoke did. We all like open floor plans nowadays, so we don't keep doors shut in that, and wherever the heavy black smoke goes, the fire will follow. And so therefore, at night, bedroom doors are really not for privacy, they're for fire security. And you should have an extinguisher in your room, so that you do have a exit plan to get out. Fires are moving faster now than ever. It's the plastics, and even though we're in a room with a lot of wood in it, there's a lot of plastics in this room right here alone. And the toxic gases and the speed at which it can go from 215 to 1200 degrees is 30 seconds or less. So, these fires move fast, so I recommend calling for help immediately. And then if you should so choose to fight a fire with an extinguisher, then you should make sure you have an exit to your back, and then when this thing flares up. She literally ran out the front door and shut it. The firemen were walking in the front door with an extinguisher to a stove fire, and a belch of black smoke and fire came out, and they shut the door and said, "I think we need more than an extinguisher." So, that was just in the period of the three and a half minutes it took us to get there. So, this is a big deal in today's society, and a lot of people don't spend the money on smoke detectors and that. If I were you, and you got it, put one in every room, and then put some extinguishers in your home. I know they're not exactly our core, but they're definitely important to have for your fire safety. That's all I have.
That's it?
Thank you.
Do we have anyone else who wants to? No? Okay, that's great. All right. The next item is public discussion items not on the agenda. If you'll come up, and tell us your name and address.
I'm Lyle Ulinski, 30 Wellsley. My husband John and I are here tonight to ask the citizens of Pleasant Ridge for your help. John and I have volunteered for Fern Care Free Medical Clinic in Ferndale for over five years. Fern Care is a 501(c)(3) medical clinic that serves patients between the ages of 19 and 64 who have no insurance. We service anyone. They don't have to be in Ferndale, they don't have to be in Pleasant Ridge, they come from Birmingham, Detroit, Southfield, all over this area. In Fern Care, all exams, blood tests, and medication are completely free to our patients. Only the clinic manager is paid. The doctors, nurses, and staff all donate their time. Last Wednesday, a water pipe burst, and over an inch of water flooded the reception area, the exam rooms, the blood lab, and the pharmacy. Carpet, drywall, and fiberboard cabinets will have to be replaced. Insurance will not cover all the costs for repairs. This setback will limit the number of clinics we can run unless we get outside help. Fern Care runs on grants and donations, so tonight, we're here to ask for donations to help us recover and continue to serve the 200-plus patients who so desperately need our care. If you have any interest in helping out, stop by our open house on January 26th at 30 Wellsley from 5:00 to 8:00 p.m. with a check or cash donation, and grab some cheer and snacks. I say snacks, because I couldn't spell hors d'oeuvre. I also have some info with me about Fern Care, with our website and our address on it. And thank you very much for your attention.
Lyle, are you still looking for volunteers for Thursday evening?
I think we have enough.
Do you have enough?
Yes, thank you. We have a number of people who have volunteered for cleanup and setup, so I think we're going to have a clinic Saturday.
Yeah, I don't want to overwhelm you, because then...
Yeah, I believe we...
Then sometimes it's too many.
Yeah, I think so. Thank you. So just come, if you would like, and get one of these from me. Thanks.
Are there any other, anybody else want to speak?
Welcome to that address, ma'am.
30 Wellsley.
Okay, we'll close the public discussion. The next item is consideration of the annual meeting schedules for the following commissions: City Commission, Historical Commission, Planning Commission Downtown Development Authority, and Recreation Commission.
Mr. Mayor, I'll defer to the city clerk, because she is the one that prepares the schedule. So it's, it's pretty straightforward, but she can explain it if you have any questions.
I provided the schedule to all of you prior to the meeting. The City Commission meets the second Tuesday of every month in this building at 7:30 p.m. The City Commission has also requested a second meeting, monthly meeting, which will be the fourth Tuesday, either to hold coffee with commission, if they need some type of special City Commission meeting, and even possibly holding ZBA meetings on that day. The Historical Commission meets the first Wednesday of every month at 7:00 p.m. at the Recreation Center. The Planning Commission DDA meets at 7:00 p.m. at City Hall. They meet on the fourth Monday, and then the Recreation Commission meets at 7:00 p.m. at the Community Center, and they meet the last Wednesday of every month. All those meetings are open to the public, and we encourage anyone that has any interest to attend.
Thank you. Do I have a motion to approve?
Your Honor, I move the 2014 annual meeting schedule for the City Commission, Historical Commission, Planning Commission, and Downtown Development Authority, and the Recreation Commission. Be approved as recommended.
Is there support?
Second.
May we take a vote?
Commissioner Perry?
Yes.
Commissioner Foreman?
Yes.
Commissioner Chrisia?
Yes.
Commissioner Scott?
Yes.
Mayor Metzger?
Yes. Motion carries. All right. The next agenda item is a public hearing, solicitation of public comments on the proposed 2014-2019 City of Pleasant Ridge Parks and Recreation Master Plan. And we already commented on the great meeting that was held last Thursday, and so we don't have to go on that again, but allow me to open the public hearing. I just love this. Close the public hearing. Okay. Two for two, I keep believing, one of these days. The next item is consideration of the proposed 2014-2019 City of Pleasant Ridge Parks and Recreation Master Plan.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm delighted to have this on the agenda tonight. This is just under a year in the making, so it is exciting to be at the end of the process and hopefully have the plan approved tonight. So we started on February 27th of last year with the idea of updating the Recreation Master Plan, and now we are here today. We've had a number of meetings at the Recreation Commission level, workshops with the City Commission, surveys that went out citywide, park walkthroughs, 30-day public comment period, the meeting that we had the other night, just so people can see what's happening in Gainesboro, and now we're here today. So, this is part of the process to get the plan approved, and one of them is to hold the public hearing, and then to approve the plan if there's no substantive changes. So, at this point, I am recommending, and the Recreation Commission also is recommending, that the current plan that we have is approved by the City Commission tonight, so we can forward it on to grants management at the Michigan Department of Natural Resources.
It's been an interesting and really worthwhile process, I think, and I think it's a very great plan. So, is there a motion for approval?
Mayor, I move that 2014 through 2019 City of Pleasant Ridge Parks and Recreation Master Plan be approved as recommended.
Is there support?
Second.
May we take a vote?
Commissioner Chrisia?
Yes.
Commissioner Foreman?
Yes.
Commissioner Perry?
Yes.
Commissioner Scott?
Yes.
Mayor Metzger?
Yes. Motion carries.
Thank you.
All right.
And I do want to, real quick, I want to thank Caitlin Jackson from Beck and Rader. She was at the meeting tonight, in case there's any questions, and she did a majority of the work on the plan, and we've been going back and forth on emails for the last couple of days, making sure everything was up, but I do want to thank you, Caitlin.
Yeah, if I could just say, it's been an absolute pleasure working on your Recreation Master Plan, and I look forward to seeing what Pleasant Ridge can accomplish in the future.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay, the next item is consideration of the resolution of support for the Michigan Suburbs Alliance Millennial Mayor's Congress.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, this item is on the agenda at the request of the millennial representative, Mr. Alex Linco, and the Michigan Suburbs Alliance. So I am pleased to introduce Alex to you tonight, and he is going to go over a little bit of some of the work that MSA is doing to help millennials be part of governmental process, and some of the other resolutions that they're asking for.
Wait, I just wanted to say, I thought I was going to be different in pink, but now I see.
You got the memo, see?
Yes, no, especially since we're together on this. It's nice to see. Great minds.
Alex Linco, 62 in Wellsley, life long in Pleasant Ridge, Michigan Suburbs Alliance Millennial Mayor's representative for Pleasant Ridge since its inception. And so we're here tonight. We've always received some amount of support from the city, but we're asking for your continued resolution and increased support of the program. Emily Thompson is the director of the Millennial Mayor's Program, and I brought her along to explain the resolution just a bit, because she can do it much better than I can, and then talk about the next steps. And then finally, the next agenda item is the reappointment of me, the millennial rep, Bridget Brown, the backup, and then the Mr. Mayor. So, Emily?
Sure. So my understanding is that you got some information in your commission packets tonight. I don't want to bore you, but I will answer questions at the end if I don't cover something that you, you know, had a question about. So the Millennial Mayor's Congress is a partnership of elected officials and young people from 23 different cities in metro Detroit. We define millennial as an individual between the ages of 18 and 35. The original idea was that millennials were leaving the area, and we needed to do something to engage them, so we would create the Congress and bring together young people and elected officials to have the conversations about what our cities can do to make themselves more attractive. This year, I joined the staff, and the first thing that I heard from our elected officials was, "That's great that you want us to engage young people and make our cities more attractive for them, but they don't come to anything. They're not, they're not participating. At some point, why do I care?" And I thought that that was an interesting question of whether or not young people actually participate in government. And we decided to do a little research with some help from a U of M class. So we looked at the percent of the population between the ages of 18 and 35 in all of our cities and in our region, the percent of registered voters between the ages of 18 and 35, and then the percent of individuals who serve on a border commission. And not surprisingly, we found that young people are underrepresented. But I think what's more interesting than that was that the students had a really hard time finding information out about these different bodies. They were looking at city websites, and most of them struggled to even find the border commission page, if there was one. Some of our cities don't have them, they share almost no information. And so we started thinking about how we could help our cities kind of put information out there online, where we know that young people are most likely to look for it. We did a couple of things this year. As a group, we created a set of information sharing best practices. We, and you can actually see on the report for the City of Pleasant Ridge, how Pleasant Ridge kind of stacks up against other cities as far as the best practices are concerned. They're pretty straightforward, things like putting, you know, a list of your boards and commissions on your website. We do get a little more creative and suggest that cities consider things like youth councils, where you engage high school students so that they start getting involved at a young age, and are more likely to continue that involvement in their 20s and 30s. We pushed it a little bit at the suggestion of Huntington Woods, and even suggested that some cities look at ways to encourage some folks to step down so that new folks can get involved. Huntington Woods has term limits, none of the other cities do, so it's not a firm recommendation, but we came up with a variety of different things that we thought cities could try. We also applied for a grant from the Knight Foundation. We applied through something called the Knight Foundation News Challenge. We were one of 850 applicants, and we made the top 30. We were one of 850 applicants, and we made the top 30, because we have such a great group of young people who are so dedicated to this. We asked the Knight Foundation for a couple hundred thousand dollars to build a website, and they said, "We would really like to fund you, but what if we give you 50,000 and we see what you do, and we'll talk in six months." So right now, we have a $50,000 prototype grant, and we are working with three of the Millennial Mayors Congress cities to build really a database that our cities can use to keep track of positions and information. And the front end of that database is a website, onboard.org, and if you're interested in getting involved in Michigan on a border commission in the future, the idea is that you go to onboard.org, you see a list of all the communities that participate, you get a very clear list of the boards and commissions that exist, and with each, you get a certain amount of information, like a description, the names of the folks that are currently serving. Some of the information in the database is private, but for the most part, we're encouraging our cities and trying to help them get information out there. So that's kind of where we're standing, and...
And I would like to interject one point, too. One of the metrics that we came up with was striving to have at least 8% representation, or in Pleasant Ridge, the way it would shake out, would be 5% representation of millennials on boards and commissions. At this point, we're actually at 8, so...
So we're asking you to pass a resolution in support that's not...
Right, and also of the other benchmarks, and it's non-binding, but it's in support. So we, and what we're asking is for you to pass a resolution in support of our work and taking steps to improve transparency and engagement, will help the residents of Pleasant Ridge and taking an active role in their community, and especially help position Pleasant Ridge as welcoming younger professionals, younger families to the neighborhood.
It'll also help us ask the Knight Foundation for additional funding to continue the project. If you are passing a resolution as a way of you showing support for what we do, and we're able to take that information to the Knight Foundation, and the real strength of our pitch is that we have all these communities who are really interested in this and want to work together.
Thank you.
Great. Thank you. I mean, as a board member of MSA, I've always been very, this has been one of the more exciting projects, so I've always been extremely supportive and interested in supporting the millennial mayors and...
Thank you. Appreciate your work.
I'm glad that we've been part of it, and would love to see how we can ratchet up our representation as well, so, and make sure that we meet all the best practices. I'm glad you're giving us the directions on how to do that, so, thank you very much.
Sure.
Okay, do we have a, I don't know if there are any questions or comments, I'm sorry. Anything?
No.
No, okay. Is there a motion for approval?
Your Honor, I move the resolution, excuse me, the resolution is support of the Michigan Suburbs Alliance Millennial Mayors Congress be approved as recommended.
Is there support? Second. May we take a vote?
Commissioner Scott?
Yes.
Commissioner Perry?
Yes.
Commissioner Foreman?
Yes.
Commissioner Crisia?
Yes.
Mayor Metzger?
Yes, motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And the next item is consideration of the appointment of Mayor Kurt Metzger as the mayoral representative, Mr. Alex Lenko as the city's millennial representative, and Ms. Bridget Brown as the city's alternate millennial representative to the Michigan Suburbs Alliance Millennial Mayors Congress.
Yeah, this is just a general housekeeping item. We need to forward this resolution on to MSA for our representatives. I am sad to say that I used to be at 18 to 35, but I've been, I use the word aged out. That is very difficult.
See, I used to be 18 to 35. I wasn't a millennial, so...
So I'm recommending approval on this.
Is there a motion for approval?
Mayor, I move the appointment of Mayor Kurt Metzger as the mayoral representative, Mr. Alex Lenko as the city's millennial representative, Ms. Bridget Brown as the city's alternate millennial representative to the Michigan Suburbs Alliance Millennial Mayors Congress be approved as recommended.
Is there support?
I second.
May we take a vote?
Commissioner Foreman?
Yes.
Commissioner Scott?
Yes.
Commissioner Crisia?
Yes.
Commissioner Perry?
Yes.
Mayor Metzger?
Yes, motion carries. Thanks very much.
Thank you very much.
See you soon. Okay, the next item is consideration of the appointment of Mr. Tom Troyder to the Michigan Ridge, Pleasant, Michigan, Pleasant Ridge Board of Review to fill an unexpired term, term to expire December 31st, 2015.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, this is a board review position that is open because of a resignation of one of the current members. Mr. Troyder has expressed interest in serving on the board, and I recommend approval.
Is there a motion for approval?
Mayor, I move that the appointments of Mr. Tom Troyder to the, the appointment of Mr. Tom Troyder to the Pleasant Ridge Board of Review for a partial term, term to expire December 31st, 2015 be approved as recommended.
Is there support?
Second.
May we take a vote?
Commissioner Perry?
Yes.
Commissioner Foreman?
Yes.
Commissioner Crisia?
Yes.
Commissioner Scott?
Yes.
Mayor Metzger?
Yes, motion carries. Congratulations, Tom. Did you want to make a speech?
He's reviewing it.
Little second thought. You're there. Okay, the next item is consideration of the reappointment of Mr. Michael Zunick. I always pronounce, is that pronounced? Okay. To the Pleasant Ridge Board of Review, term to expire December 31st, 2016.
This is another item. Mr. Zunick has been on the board review for a number of years, and he has agreed to stay aboard, so I again recommend approval.
Do I have a motion to approve?
Your Honor, I move that the appointment of Mr. Michael Zunick to the Pleasant Ridge Board of Review, term to expire December 31st, 2016 be approved as recommended.
Do we have support? Second. May we take a vote?
Mr. Scott?
Yes.
Commissioner Perry?
Yes.
Commissioner Foreman?
Yes.
Commissioner Crisia?
Yes.
Mayor Metzger?
Yes, motion carries.
Quick question, is there a term limit on this position?
Not in your case, you're...
You might...
You're here forever.
You have the term limit on the other commissions, huh?
You might have one.
I didn't find it when I was looking through the chart.
There is.
Oh, there is, wow.
There is, you can serve full terms. So Tom is coming on for a partial term.
Right, so that doesn't count.
Right, and then he can do his first full. I think you came on as a partial, too. I'll check it. I'm pretty sure you came on as a partial, so this will be your first full.
Okay.
Okay?
Congratulations, I think. Yeah, I will definitely give you, I'll give you my personal place at the American House next time. I didn't pull out when you were...
Was that you saying?
I was, yes, I was. Sorry, if I'd only known.
Mayor, if I could, I'd just like to congratulate Mr. Zunick on his reappointment, and Alex on his appointment, and just know that Wellsley has a very active citizen participation. I'm very proud to call them both neighbors.
Yes, thank you.
Very good. Hey, Wellsley. Okay, the next item is consideration of the update regarding interim city manager. Calm down. I just wanted to open this up just to say, I think, obviously, this is one of those topics that's been going on for several months now, and as many residents are aware, we selected John Zek. After we did the interviews for the five, we interviewed John Zek and selected him for interim city manager. We entered negotiations with him prior to the holidays, and at that time, he informed Amy that he was going through a number of issues with family illnesses and needed time to think about it, to, needed the holiday period, to think about it, to talk to his family, and would get back to us after the holidays. Amy then contacted him, and he asked again for a period till January, I think it was last Friday, that he would notify us one way or the other. As of Friday, he notified us that he would not be able to take a full-time position as interim city manager, but we started discussions about a part-time consultant arrangement where he would work with us on the budget and work with the Citizens Advisory Committee, that he would be using his knowledge and what we were looking for in his role as interim city manager. One of the important things was to help us through the budget process, help us work with the Citizens Advisory Committee to really go through the budget, the whole idea of what the Citizens Advisory Committee was. And so we are now starting to have further discussions. We've authorized Amy to continue those discussions, Amy and our city attorney, Charlie Cooper, to continue those discussions with him around the consultancy. And at this time, we will, we have talked to Scott Piersak, and he would continue as acting city manager in the role that he is right now.
I have a question. Please. Pat Church, 46, Oxford. I'm just curious as why this was, his position as interim city manager was announced in the newspaper, online, before our contract and everything was settled, because it doesn't make us look very good.
It was announced that we had selected him. That's all of it.
That we were negotiating.
That was the announcement. It was not anything beyond that.
Because that's how it sounded like, if you read things, like on website, people are congratulating him, and, just as well, why that was announced prematurely.
I can't help what people do. I mean, it was announced that he was selected.
Okay, thank you.
Is there any hard talks? Any other comments and discussion? The next item is consideration of the report regarding a Citizens Advisory Committee. Let me just start an update, and then anybody can chime in. We are at the point, as you know, we announced the formation of a Citizens Advisory Committee that would be comprised of 15 residents. We posted on Facebook, we mentioned it at the last commission meeting, we've had it on Nextdoor, we've had a lot of e-blasts, a couple e-blasts, but we also felt that we wanted to make sure that everyone in the city had an opportunity to at least see the announcement, to feel that they had actually been invited and had the opportunity. So we decided, instead of closing things off in January and announcing this evening, we wanted to post it in the Ridger and make sure that the Ridger had the announcement, went to every household, everybody got to see it. And so we had done that, and just in the Ridger that was delivered over the weekend was the announcement on the front page. We've now moved our selection process, the deadline for applications to February 3rd. As of right now, we have 35 applicants in, which is terrific. So we, it's not for want of interest, we already have 35 applicants without, several have come in since the Ridger was delivered, and I'm not sure if that was because of the Ridger or just people were slow in getting their responses. But we have now moved the deadline to February 3rd, and we will announce the 15 at the February 11th meeting. We hope that there will be more. We want as wide a interest as possible. What else did I want to say? Also, there is some difference between the article that appears in the printed version and the article that appears online. There's an online version which is updated, so the article that is on the front page doesn't delve as much into the details around budgeting that I hoped to be much more of the discussion. This is not just a committee to determine a headly override. This is a committee to actually delve into the budget, to determine whether we want to go over after a headly or not, or how do we want to readjust services, and how do we want to look at revenues and expenses. So it's much more detailed, it's much more going through the whole budgeting process with us. As we said, we would have a consultant. Presumably, it will be John Zek, we don't know, it may be someone else, but we would have a consultant working very closely with our budgeting process, doing a much more detailed explanation, working through all the details of the budget with this Citizens Advisory Committee, just as they'd be working with us as well. And we would hope at the end of that process, people would feel very comfortable with making a determination of how we go forward. Any other?
No, that's fine.
Mayor, my understanding, just I confirm it, is that the product of the Citizens Advisory Committee, or at least in the early stages of it, the first phase of it, could help influence our next budget. Is that correct?
Yes. Very much so. I mean, this is, and what we, as has been said, and the one thing also on the updating of the online articles, that the printed version says that the meetings will start in January, we obviously will not, they won't start in January, they'll start in February, so it'll be during a period of February to May, and we do expect four to five meetings of two to four hours, something like that. There will be open meetings, there will be open workshops held at the Community Center so anybody can come and attend. We will have a representative, but we will not be necessarily, we're not going to be engaged in those. We want the committee to actually feel very free to get all the details, to work through it, to ask the kinds of questions, and not be concerned with having the commission. We will be doing our own work as well. I mean, obviously, we will have similar kinds of workshops that we will be going through, similar kinds of discussions, but we want that committee to feel empowered, an overused word, but empowered to make, to ask the kinds of questions they need to ask, to ask for the information that they feel they need to make those decisions, and to feel very open and recognize that any information they need will be provided to them. There isn't going to be anything held back. So the kinds of information, we're going to try to provide at the outset as much detail as possible, but we expect the committee to be asking for more detail, and that they will get what they need. So we want to make sure that this is a very robust process, and that we are very interested and want to make sure that we realize that we're going to be listening to the input from that committee, so. So it is very important, and as I said, it's, I think, Scott was doing an analysis, what do we have? We range, we ask for people that the limitation, you had to live here one year and you had to be a registered voter. We now have, what, between one year of residence and 47 years? Is that what it is? And a median of 15 years? Average of 17.6.
Seventeen point six.
I remember my memory.
There you go.
So it's quite a diverse, we're getting it, again, as we talked, and there's been some discussion of what demographic or what do we mean by diversity, it's certainly showing up in all areas across the applicants, so it's a very interesting, and it's interesting to read why people want it. I think it's really, there are some of the qualifications, but it's very interesting to read why people are interested in being part of this. And I think it really tells a strong story of how people feel about Pleasant Ridge, and how much they want to be engaged in these discussions, and how much they want to be engaged in the future of Pleasant Ridge. So I'm very enthused by what we've seen, and I expect that we'll see even more applicants coming through the Ridger now.
Excuse me, Mr. Mayor, one more thing. Especially in light of tonight's conversation, I'm wondering what percentage of millennials we'll shoot for in this?
There you go. Five percent. Isn't it? We just need five, right?
Shooting for... I think by definition, it'll be seven. At least.
We can get one millennial. I'm hoping there'll be a couple millennials in there, although we didn't ask for eight, so it's going to be tough. They're going to have to tell us. Any other? Okay. The next item on the agenda is city manager report.
A couple of things from me, Mr. Mayor, is, first of all, is that City Hall will be closed on Monday for Martin Luther King Jr.'s birthday. The Community Center is still open, so the Wellness Center and Community Center will have its regular hours from 6:00 a.m. till 9:00. Because of the holiday also, the salt buckets will not be filled until Tuesday. Feel free to put them out there, you know, on Sunday night if you want to, or Monday, just so you don't forget, but...
Could you just grab that for just a moment for people?
Oh, sure. If you put a five-gallon bucket out on, at the curb, like where you would put your loose brush or your garbage, on the third Monday of the month, the same day that loose brush is picked up during the winter, we'll come by and fill it up with rock salt for you so you can, you know, use it for ice control. So again, make sure you put out your buckets, so that they will, if they're not filled on Monday, it's because of the holiday, so we'll be doing it on Tuesday. Just for those that are sports-minded, soccer, baseball, and swim team sign-up has started at Four Ridge. I know it sounds like way early, but soccer, everywhere except the United States, is a winter sport. I could tell them are soccer fans.
You're crazy.
So they start, they start sign-ups now, because they actually will start play in May or April. And then baseball sign-ups, because of field and setting our teams, we need to know those sizes of those teams early, so. And of course, the swim team is just its own beast, so that sign-up starts now. So make sure you get over to the Community Center and get signed up for those classes, those... for those sports, so you can assure that you're on team. As Commissioner Perry mentioned, that January 22nd is the visioning session for the community wide master plan, it's at 7:00 PM at Four Ridge. And also on that date is, so the women's club soup and salad night, so maybe you can come and eat some soup and salad at 6:30 on the 22nd and then come and visit us over at the visioning session. So that will be at Four Ridge, again, on the 22nd. And also, I would like to thank the women's club for a donation of $200 toward, we purchased a new podium over at the community center, because the other one was just, oh my gosh, it was, it was here when I started, that was 15 years ago, and it was probably here 20 years before that, so. The new podium has a screen on the front where we can put logos for people, and I think you guys saw it, a couple events that we had, and it's got a microphone system on it, so we do appreciate the women's club helping donate toward that cause. And that's all for me.
Any questions? Okay. Is there any other business?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Andre Tankey, 29 Oakland Park. It's a pleasure to be here for this commission. One thing that was interesting in the last election was that certain aspects of the city's budgets were revealed to the public. One issue that I found most interesting, being one of the highest water consumers in the city, and one of the highest taxpayers in the city as well, was that a significant portion of the water bill was used to fund the general budget items. Being an attorney, I then had another attorney do a little bit of research to see, and for lack of better purposes, these are typically called enterprise funds, statutes typically say, this enterprise fund, whatever money is excess, can go into a general fund. General rule is, there's a prohibition of using those monies for general fund monies because that's called an illegal tax. Here's the Pandora's Box I'm about to open. If the city has been collecting an illegal tax on the residents, there will be a refund necessary, which will then incur a special assessment on taxation. However, it is my earnest belief, based on some research, that the, some of the water bill is an illegal tax. I come to the city panel, to the city council, and ask you to come up with a mechanism, especially that you now have a citizen advisory group for budgetary issue, to determine, and I don't know the answer. I've done some research, determine, is the current water structure legal? Is it unlawful? Is it criminal? I don't know. I don't know any of those. And then what are the consequences? What are the ramifications? And I don't know your process to determine that. Do you hire, do you ask the attorney general to step in and do the investigation? Do you hire an outside third party? Do you hire the current consultants that have been telling you that it's legal? I don't know, but I turn to you to address this, to get this right. If we're going to have new taxes, let's have taxes for what they're meant to be funded. Let's not try to hide general fund expenditures under fees for water and sewage and garbage. So I turn to you and ask you, let's come up with a mechanism to find out what's right and do what's right. And if it results, sorry, if it results in a special assessment because there's a massive refund due to me, I would probably pay more in taxes than I get the refund. But I think it's, I think that's something we need to get to do, because I think there's been too much, you know, one hand hiding the other to try to figure out how, economic times have been tough, and I think everybody got creative. I think we stretched it a little bit here. That's my personal opinion, I don't know, maybe attorney general can look into it and tell us what's legal. So I turn to you and ask you to figure out a mechanism to see, to get to the bottom, get it right. Thank you.
I know those will be part of the discussions in the budgeting process too. Is there any, any other business before the council?
Well, thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to announce the next installment of the book club. Charlie, we need you to show up next time. Me and you, you show up and doubles the attendance, so please. No, we've been, we've had some good turnout. But next Tuesday, in lieu of discussing a particular book, what thing I thought would be interesting if we gathered some suggestions for a reading list for the year that would populate the, each month with a title. So I'm asking anyone who's interested to join us next Tuesday, January 21st, at 7:00 PM at the community center. This will be a very informal discussion about some of our favorite books or interesting books, and hopefully, the group can agree on a reading list for the year, and I'm really excited to hear about different contributions to that list. If anyone can't make it but would like to suggest a title, you can send it to my email address, jkriziac@cityofpleasanridge.org. Thank you.
We're going to, we're going to make this book club kick off this time. I also suggested that I'm, I've been told that I need to clean out the shelves of my, some of my bookshelves, so I'm putting together a list of all the books that I want to donate to some, either those little book, our little book houses or whatever we start to do, but also come up with a list of possible reading, so.
Thank you.
I'll be there.
Okay, thank you, Mayor.
That's a threat.
You and Charlie.
Come on, Charlie, you got to do it. Any other business? Can we call for a adjournment? Yes.
So moved?
Please stand adjourned. Unless you. Oh. Good job. You're fine.